I will start by saying that all members are present and I believe Chair Ritchie is online.
I am, thank you.
All right. With that, I will actually turn the time over to Councilmember Graff to do the Pledge of Allegiance, since we couldn't recruit anyone from the...
Yeah, we tried.
Okay.
Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any acknowledgements? I always look to you. Are there any?
I was gonna say, hey, it's Independence Day this week. I was just gonna mention that.
Yeah, and if you saw Councilmember Hires, hi.
Yeah. Hope everyone has a safe and wonderful holiday.
Yeah, and with that, we, earlier today, thank you for that, but earlier today, the Fire Marshal came and talked about the restrictions. And we'll have some restrictions as far as fireworks. So, east of Harrison, I'm not sure of all the places, but I think we're gonna post it on the website, trying to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe, so.
Just to be clear, a little north of Second Street, it moves to Monroe and goes north to the city boundary, so.
Thanks, yeah.
Since it is so close to the, you know, Harrison is essentially the mountain there, so.
And I guess I just want to acknowledge, too, that the time that city leadership and administration took and construction folks took us on a tour last week, last Wednesday, of both the Wonder Block, as it's under construction, and the Marshall White Center. And both are moving right along, and both will be wonderful additions to our community when they complete. I think they said we're looking for Marshall White to complete in February or so, so stay tuned.
Anything else? Great. With that, I'm gonna turn to the next agenda item, approval of minutes, starting with the work session of May 28th and closed session of June 11th, 2024. Councilmember Graff.
Yes, Vice Chair White, I've reviewed those minutes and find them to be accurate, to the best of my recollection.
Great. And the work session and regular meeting of June 4th, 2024, the day before my birthday, Councilmember Blair.
That was not in the minutes, but yes, I reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
Trick question.
I would make a motion that we adopt the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Blair and second by Councilmember Graff. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Just waiting, all right. Chair Ritchie, do you wanna? All right, we'll move on. All right, the next item on our agenda is recognition. We have a wonderful recognition, and I'm gonna turn the time over to Councilmember Hires.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair White. This has been, I've got some longtime acquaintance with Jeanette Borkland. And so, this is really my honor to do this, and I know that Dave Graff also has some closeness with her inasmuch as we both served on the Planning Commission for a considerable amount of time. And anyway, it was just always really nice that she was absolutely a rock and the rudder to the Planning Department. But this is a recognition. The Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognized Jeanette Borkland for providing invaluable contributions to the Ogden community. Throughout her extraordinary 43-year career in Ogden City's Planning Department, and I challenge anybody else to come, say they worked for Ogden City longer than that. I think that's a record. Jeanette Borkland has exemplified exceptional service and unwavering dedication to our community. Holding various roles, including Secretary, Senior Secretary, Senior Office Assistant, Planning Technician and Administrative Assistant, Jeanette has been a cornerstone of the department's success. Her knowledge, professionalism, and passion for serving Ogden City have been invaluable in every role she undertook. As Secretary for the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Adjustments, Ogden Trails Network Committee, and the Landmarks Commission, Jeanette showcased her exceptional organizational skills and meticulous preparation. Her commitment to accurately documenting Commission members' thoughts and ensuring the smooth operation of meetings made her an indispensable asset. Despite facing continuous challenges, increased responsibilities, and numerous technological advancements throughout her career, Jeanette maintained a positive attitude and adapted to every situation with unwavering dedication and helped her colleagues follow along, I might add. Jeanette retired after more than four decades of service. Her commitment to excellence has had a lasting impact on Ogden City's Planning Department and the community at large. We wish her the best in her future endeavors and are confident that her influence will impact and impact will continue to be felt for years to come. Presented this second day of July, 2024. And I make a motion that we recognize Jeanette Borkland with this recognition.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hires and second by Councilmember Graff to recognize Jeanette Borkland. All in paper?
Aye.
Any questions?
And in addition to the written comments that you just shared with us, Rich, congratulations, Jeanette, and thank you, not just from me, but from everybody that's gone through the Planning Department over your 43 years. You made their experience a richer one and a more organized one as a result of your efforts. Somebody said to me a long time ago that if you think you'll be missed in this job, pull your fist out of a bucket of water and see how long the hole sits there. It doesn't, but I think that, in your case, it will. Your name will be mentioned in a positive manner and remembered in the planning area for a long, long time to come. Thank you.
You know, another thing with Jeanette, and I gotta add just some personal, we had a field trip every time we'd go on, we had a meeting, we'd go to see the sites that were having a proposal. And Jeanette would always make the treat. She would kinda make something special for the commissioners and the staff to enjoy in the van as we rode around. They were always delicious, by the way, Jeanette. However, that one day that I got the sponge instead of the brownie on April 1st, you know, yeah. April 1st, that's, yeah, okay, that's April 1st. Yeah, she made a brownie that looked exactly like, I mean, a sponge looked exactly like a brownie. And I was the guy that got that that year. Everybody was enjoying these delicious brownies, and I couldn't figure why I couldn't bite mine off. But she always made the job fun. She interjected humor. If you ever went into her office, she always had a bunch of cartoons with something that was humorous and stuff. So, we're gonna really miss it, Jeanette. Your fist is gonna keep that in that bucket of water. So, thank you so much for all that you've done for the city and for your tenure. That 43 years is remarkable.
Thank you.
Okay, you have to come up now, Bo.
Can my Bo say something?
Well, we're gonna take a photo of you. We're gonna hand you this. We're gonna see if we can't get a handshake out of you, and then we want you to say something. Thank you, Jeanette. Congratulations. And perhaps your husband, son, and we have some, we have the new Planning Director, Deputy Director, is that what you're gonna do? Yep, and some Planning Commissioners. So, we gotta have you all come up for this photo.
All people on the outside.
Yeah, we're just gonna have you stand right in front of the council here. All right, everybody looking here, one, two, three. Okay, that should be good. Thank you so much. Nowhere I hear from you, Jeanette.
I thought I said a few minutes ago, but now I forgot. But it has been a joy to work for Ogden City. It's been, I've learned a lot and met a lot of amazing people, so. But it's nice to be done. I thought about wearing, Mark, he bought me a shirt for my retirement party that said, "I'm retired and you're not. Have fun at work tomorrow." And I thought about wearing that today, thought, no, probably not. Probably not a good idea. But it's been a lot of good time. The thing about the brownies is, there was more than one sponge. There were several. But the trick is dipping them in the bitter cocoa powder, so they taste bad, too. And then frosting them. And then I had a regular brownie recipe that looked exactly like them, and so I just put them on the same plate. And some people got brownies and some people got sponges. And those ones that got sponges kinda hid them away and wondered why people were still able to eat what they were eating. And it happened more than once. I did it more than once on April Fool, so.
Yeah. I wondered if Brian or Kathy ever got a sponge. Did you guys, oh, Brian got a sponge, too. Oh, good.
Brian's been around long enough. But, yeah, I've had good leaders, good directors, good planners to work with, and I've learned a lot about planning in the community and seen a lot of growth. Thinking about back in 1981, when I started, we were in a little building on 25th Street. And the city had thought, in order to recruit business on 25th Street, because it was just barely starting to turn around and wanted to get foot traffic down there, so buy a building, but the city office is down there. And so, we were down there for four, five years, and then we moved across the street to the State Building, because when they built, they only wanted to go six stories. And the city said, if you go an extra story, we'll take a floor for a while. So, we took a floor there for a while, and then moved across to the corner of 25th and Washington for a while, and then finally back here. So, actually, when I started, we were in the Ben Lemon Hotel, but we were contacted with Weber County. So, we were actually not a city employee, I was a Weber County employee. So, made it through five moves, so. It's been quite the experience, but I appreciate the recognition. I appreciate the nice words that were said, and just glad to be done with it.
Thanks, Jeanette.
Thanks, Jeanette.
Thank you, Jeanette.
You know, I think Jeanette's forgot more than most of the staff ever knew.
Yeah.
She's been around so long.
Yep.
All right, go ahead, Mayor.
If it's okay if I add a couple of comments. You know, that's a lot of years. And as I reflect back on the records, I count, one, two, three, seven mayors at least that she's worked with, maybe eight, depending on your exact start date. And we talk about, we talk about politics a lot in the world today, and we talk about the changes that happen with politics. We ought to also be really mindful or reminded of the negative changes that happen with the sea changes that can happen in politics and partisan politics, while always remembering, and I'll just remind everybody, that it's the people that are here every single day doing the work on behalf of the people in the city that are really making the biggest difference. And Jeanette is the exact example of that. Seven mayors, maybe eight. All of the policy changes in the politics, all of the rhetoric from the past compared to the rhetoric of today, who knows? All of the changes that must have come. And all of that time, the steadying of the ship by the Jeanettes. So, thank you for four decades of service. I'm sure if the other mayors were here, they'd thank you for your service. Thanks for always having an eye toward doing the right thing for the right reasons, for people, for our community, for our city. That's what people like you do, and we are so blessed in the city to have Jeanette and many, many like her. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. Any other comments? All right. Thank you. Well, next on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns on ideas or topics. If you want, please come up and state your name, and you have three minutes.
These guys all wanted to talk, I think. That's why they all stood up, right?
I can't see if there's anyone on, oh. Oh, there we go. All right, great. Oh. All right, let's start with online. Heath Sato, if you can unmute and have three minutes.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. It was interesting listening to the work session today. There was a lot of discussion about our prosecutor's office, a review done that was requested last April by our city attorney. And I was taken by the city attorney's comments about how, you know, they got back some information they knew, and they got back information like they needed more help there. And, but he also said that he learned a lot about what they didn't even know they didn't know. Didn't use those exact words, but I thought it was valuable that we did that and that we've learned these things. And I just wanna reiterate that I think it'd be a great idea to do this on a wider scale with the whole city. We haven't had any sort of large-scale review like that of where we have people missing, where we need more help, where we have redundancies. And I think it could be good for making our city work a little more smoothly with maybe a little less budget. That would be great. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Heath.
Good evening. Happy Independence Day. We all know what Independence Day was about. It was about taxation without representation. So, we threw some tea in the water and started a war and got our representation. And that's you. So, some of you here today are representing me, and I appreciate that you're willing to do that and that you're doing that. I listened to the work session today as well, and that's what prompted me to come down here. I was working on one of my properties, but I wanted to say some things that I observed, wanted to talk about them. So, we're getting a huge increase in pay for the police and the fire department and most of the departments, everybody that works for Ogden City. And I feel like there's a very big disconnect in Ogden City between the services that are being provided and the people that are receiving the services, the taxpayers. Because I feel like there's the same people who are the criminals, and they're the criminals 10 years ago, and they're the criminals five years ago, and they're the criminals today. And you have the same people that are the taxpayers, and they were the taxpayers 10 years ago, and they were the taxpayers five years ago, and they're the taxpayers today. Those groups of people have not changed in the city of Ogden. So, we have the police that are taxed with, you know, dealing with the criminals, and then we have the prosecutor's office that is taxed with putting the criminals in jail. And we have the idea of these departments paying for themselves, or who's gonna pay for all these services? Well, it's the taxpayers, the same taxpayers that were taxpayers 10 years ago and the same taxpayers that are taxpayers today. And the criminals are the same criminals that were criminals 10 years ago, and the criminals are the same criminals that are the criminals today. So, what have we learned in that time? Like, where have we progressed? How have we become a better city, a more functional city? And that, I think, is the question. You know, I heard something about there being a fund for women victims. And I feel like women have continuously been the victims in Ogden City, and they still, they were 10 years ago, and they are today. And I don't know if that's moved the needle at all, but the needle needs to move. It just needs to move. The taxpayers cannot be paying for all this forever. The criminals need to start becoming taxpayers somehow. Figure it out. Thank you.
Thanks. Hey, Teresa? Teresa? If you could state your name.
Teresa Bramwell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know who you are. Anyone else? I see some movement.
Okay, good.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, my name's Tara Oki. I live on Taylor Avenue, the portion that connects Weber State to the D Event Center. And I think I've had some neighbors here before. But we were proposing a gate to stop traffic from our road going into Weber State. We love living where we're at. We love Weber State. It's just safety for our family. I have my three children here today. I would say almost every other home on our street has a family just like mine. So, we've tried things in the past. They have seen, you know, speedometers to see how fast traffic's moving. You probably have record of that. How many people were on our street during that timeframe? When we first moved in 13 years ago, they put up signs that you couldn't park on our street anymore. They've done several things, but nothing has changed the flow of traffic. We even have that portion of, you can park at the D Event Center and take the bus over to Weber State now. Loved it. It was a great idea. We still have a lot of traffic on our road. So, we would like to put up a gate. We love the games, the events that happen at Weber State. We propose to have a gate that can open during those events for the Lincoln fireworks every year, things that our community loves and enjoys, but just to keep the safety for our road and the homes on that road and the children and the families on that road. And I know that there's been some, things happen on the other side of Weber State with Birch, where they actually put a gate up and closed that road. So, we feel like if they can do it, why can't we? And so, I don't know if there's any comments or anything additional to share. My husband did mention, we have a lot of sports teams or players and teams that come through, and they love to speed. They love to have illegal mufflers on their vehicles, so they're loud. And as much as we want to support our teams and Weber State, we just want additional resources to make our road and our neighborhoods safe. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. All right. Anybody else? Okay.
Can I still come up?
You bet.
I'm Jake Oki. I live on Taylor. You just heard my wife speak. I'm gonna speak on something a little bit different. Still traffic in our area, but the last little bit, there's been construction on Country Hills Drive just down from our house, next to the old Jake's Over the Top. And it's been a huge inconvenience for myself and many of the people in that neighborhood. Multiple times, I've had to turn around at the bottom because I realized the road's closed. Well, there's no signs on my section of the road that remind me that the road's closed. And so, I'll end up going, driving through Weber State or through the D Event Center parking lot or up across Taylor Avenue. Shortly after construction started, though, I saw police officers parked at the old Jake's Over the Top parking lot, just waiting for people to drive through the road closed sign, and then they'd pull them over, which, hey, that's great. It's enforcing the law. However, I think there could be a much better way. Park at the top where it says "road closed" and remind people not to go through there. Or even better, they could guide traffic. There's a perfect opportunity to protect and serve the community. There's plenty of space in that area for both lanes of traffic, currently, as it is right now, the whole time. So, it's probably a little late to the construction wrapping up soon, but next time we have something that's gonna close the road in one direction, I would rather my tax dollars be used to have a police officer guiding traffic both ways rather than ambushing us on one end. So, that's all.
Great. Thanks, Jake. Anyone else? No one else online, I don't think? Okay. All right. Let's address some of the comments if we can. I just wanna say a couple of comments real quick. With Heath, I do think that there is a larger-scale staffing study that we're hoping to propose. I think that's coming, so thanks, Heath, for that. As far as Teresa Bramwell's comments, I think one of the nice things that we did two, three years ago with the Evergreen Study, we made sure that, at least within our city, that women were paid equitable compared to men. And so, I would hope that that is also another focus within our current compensation study. And then, I think it'd be best if, Mayor, you can address the Taylor Avenue and where we're at with that.
Diane, too.
And then, and maybe even with both of their comments and the signage and those kind of things.
Thanks. I was, if it's okay, I'll start with the staffing study. Thank you, Heath, for the comment. I'm in full support of such a move. The compensation study we're doing now, as soon as it ends, we will start a staffing study. I'm certain that there's room for improvement. And one of the things that I've learned in my six months that, I was reminded by a reporter today, today is my six-month mark, is that it's really hard to be proactive when you're always reactive. And when we talk about new positions, there's real need and real demand and real overload and overwhelm and real burnout in a lot of places in the city. I'm anxious to get to the staffing study, and the independence and third-party view is important. I hope we'll remember that when we look at third-party information before us currently as well. A comment was made about the huge increase in salaries, as well as the quote "disconnect." I just wanna say, instead of thinking about the huge increase in salary, think about the huge disparity in the salaries that we've been paying for a lot of years to the staff that we have. That's what it is. It's not a huge increase. It's indicative of the big delta between what we've been paying people and what other people, other cities have been paying. It's a little bit of a different way to look at it, but it's the fact. So, I'm really happy that we can finally catch up to average with our peers. Because I think that's, when we talk about disconnect, that was why... Because I think that's when we talk about disconnect, that was why I framed my budget proposal the way I did. I looked at the tax proposal that I provided relative to the increases in median wage in our area, minus how much extra it costs people through inflation to pay for a product. There's only about a 1% difference between the two. That's where my proposal came from, trying to be connected to the people in the requests that we make. Thank you, Tara and Jake, for your comments. I promise you, you don't have to continue to show up. We're taking action. I just want to say, I can't speak for the actions or inactions from the past. I wasn't here. I had two hours' notice before the last meeting through an email from Mr. Ritchie, who I think was leading the charge, before being confronted about it here. And I understand really well the position this man finds himself in, having sat in this exact chair and others around here, that you rely on as a council member, collaborative, some collaboration and some cooperation from the administration to make sure that the things that he's telling neighbors are followed up on by the administration, because it's it's two different halves of government, but we serve the same people. And so I want to make the commitment to him, but also to all of the neighbors, that we hear what you're saying and we want to help. I can't, like I said, I can't speak for what we what did or didn't happen in the past, but we've already had a meeting with Mr. Ritchie. We've had two meetings internally, I think. We're looking at a number of different interventions immediately and long-term, and we're not going to say that we're going to look into it and then not look into it. So I only ask that you give us a chance, give me a chance. I know that that doesn't go for much when you've had years of giving others a chance. But I promise you, I'm trying not to be that kind of a mayor. And I know that our people are not those those types of people. They want to be helpful. And I know that I think every time, you guys could probably relate, every time we're asked to make an intervention on the east bench in traffic, the neighborhood comes with a solution, do this. And then but what the way it really works is, there's a lot of risk to our engineers when they do that or do anything in traffic flow. And our engineers are personally licensed to be an engineer. And so when they stamp something, there's a personal liability that goes with it. And what I have to do by standards within their field is they have to put an intervention into a model and see how it changes the traffic flow, not just for that specific spot for areas around it, right? And they want to do it in terms of providing services for university as well as a community that boundaries it, right? So we have to allow them to put those inputs into the model and give us outputs back and give us input so that we can choose the best alternative that minimizes the risk so that they are not personally responsible for stamping something that wasn't responsible, if that makes sense. So I do ask that you give us a chance to work on it, but we also give our engineers an opportunity to apply their expertise with my urging. I think there's a lot of different solutions to it, including after talking with Council Member Blair at the employee picnic, thanks for coming, by the way, all of you, about the timing of the enforcement. It's not just any day and every day and any time of the year. It's also when school starts, and it's certain hours during school that matters, too. So I don't say this lightly. I know who you are. We're looking at Coach Zeke, Jake, you're the guy that took me to the hospital when I ruptured my Achilles. It's a lifetime injury and debilitating nerve damage still. There are people and kids that I know, and we want we want to be helpful. We want to be a partner at Weber State, too. I think it's been one week and two hours since it came to my desk. So I think we're making some progress, but I know it can't be fast enough, given the past, but we'll do everything we can to help, okay? And talk to me afterwards, because it's against the rules to just shout out stuff. I don't want to get in trouble with the chair. I think that was it on the on the list I had. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity, and it's an opportunity to serve, so I look forward to it. Thanks.
Yeah. Thanks for coming. Any other comments from the mayor?
None at this time. Thanks.
All right. Comments from the council members?
I'll just address a little bit, and I won't go into what I did two weeks ago when you weren't here. But I do appreciate the Okis and another neighbor, Tim Nostorak, just showed up. But yeah, I consider myself part of that neighborhood, but but I don't I don't live on that street. So but I knew I do know those neighbors want 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 a solution. They want to figure out what's what's best and what works best for 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 that neighborhood and for Weber State. So I applaud their efforts. I applaud I know Tim has hosted meetings, and I'm sure if if something like that is is needed or would be helpful, they would be happy to to host you or to host us. I'm happy to be part of it, too. I know Dave spent some time up there also, and he knows he's heard some complaints also. But I there's there's definitely a lot of energy there, and there's and and no one's pointing fingers and no one's saying, do this, do that. I think I think we all want to work together, so we appreciate your time. We appreciate your willingness to to listen and to and to implement something that would that would help. So I applaud them for being here. I applaud you for for taking their complaints seriously. And and I I do think there are solutions that can happen that do benefit everyone. So.
I just want to make a quick comment, and I want to start by saying that it's it's budget-related and that city budgets are are very inherently complicated. And I just I want to say that the administration has has been a great partner through this. And we have really been working on trying to ask questions. I don't I don't know how many countless hours I've spent talking to everyone and trying different things and going to administration and asking them to rerun numbers and do those kind of things. And so I just want to do a shout out to the administration for for being here and allowing us to ask the questions. And I think for those that have maybe shown up to see see us in the work sessions, we're playing it out in real time, and we're asking questions. And and sometimes that that that's a fear and a risk for some of us, because we don't know all the answers, but we're asking the questions, and sometimes they may not come off in the the best way. But I really do appreciate the administration and and your staff for being able to answer questions and and being there to do that. So thank you. But yeah, and I was that the but part of that is, is that we still have a few weeks to go, so we would love to hear from anyone that has concerns or what we're doing. So if you have some questions, reach out to us.
Can I just make a follow-up? And then I'll then I'll be done. I would like to thank the administration also. We in the work session, we finished right at 6:00, which made it hard to thank those directors for coming and presenting and and I don't want to say explaining, but but providing more input and more feedback on 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 the positions that are being proposed. I know I was I've been thinking a lot about that today as as my role or our role is is to try to do what we can with the the limited funds that are available, right? And 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 I think we've we've talked about that. We've talked about different solutions. We've talked about different ideas. And and then it kind of hit me, too, and during Monty's presentation, I I don't think any of us want to do anything that is is going to not allow them or any department to do their job to the best of their ability. We want them to be able to to work and to serve this community and 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 not have 200-plus, 400-plus hours of overtime because they are overworked. So I I appreciate both of you, and if you'll let them know that, I appreciate all those directors being there tonight, explaining to us the the need, I think is more valuable is what I learned tonight is the need and which which gave me some insight on how I I want to be, I want to do my part, but I also don't want to stop our our employees from from being able to do their job also. So.
And staying here for 43 years.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
Any other comments? Yes?
Just one comment. As we've reviewed the budget over the past month and a half, it's been eye-opening to me to to see the depth of study and review and proposals that have been placed before us. And as part of my due diligence, I've gone back and visited with other city council members, former mayors and others who administrative staff, in trying to understand the budget process. And the one thing that kind of rings true to me is that in the past, the city employees have always paid the price, and they've been the ones that have not had the pay increases. Their pay accounts for a significant part of our budget. So it's impressive to me that in an effort to try to have stability in our city and to treat our employees with the respect and dignity that they deserve and to have the interest in trying to have them be long-term employees and to be successful in what they're doing, and by not being at the top of the pay scale, but by being more in the middle of a pay scale, I feel good about the budget process that we've gone through in these types of review, and I'm grateful that we have that type of insight and wisdom to review and the compensation packages and to bring forth proposals to our city. We've got a lot going on in Ogden right now. Other administrations in the past have not had that opportunity to be able to expand on some of the civic and community building projects that they're doing, like the Marshall White Center, Union Station, and also the Wonder Block, and at the same time, to be able to propose pay increases for our employees. I think it's an exceptional time. I think a lot of work has taken place. I applaud the efforts that have gone into that. We still have a little more work to do to be able to get to the end of the row. But I'm grateful, and I just want to express appreciation for the effort that have gone into this budget process. It's eye-opening to me as a businessman. It's more complicated than many of the factors that I face, but it's a good, it's a it's an outstanding effort that's been put forward. I think our our administration has been representative of our community and our taxpayers. And unfortunately, the sad reality is there are some increases that are being proposed. I think they're prudent. I think they're wise. I think they have been limited in scope, but I think the necessity of some of the increases are unfortunately to taxpayers and other entities. I think that it's it's a prudent and a wise proposal that's coming forward. And I'm it's it's been eye-opening. I just want to express thanks to all those that have put in the time and effort and done the heavy lifting to get us where we're at at the current time. So thanks very much.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
There's one other item on the agenda is the closed set, the closed session. I don't think we have to do anything if we're not going into it, correct? We've chosen not to go into our closed session, so no.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Councilmember Blair. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're done. Thank you.